All righty. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Eastchester Planning Board Meeting of Thursday, June 23rd, 2022. First thing we do is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We only have three of the five members of the planning board today. So I guess that means in order to approve any of the applications, all three of the members will have to approve it. But we do have a quorum. The chairman, Jim Bonanno, is not here today. In fact, when I was told earlier today that I would be serving as the acting chairman, I demanded a sash and one was made for me. But it only says Chairman Nemec, not Acting Chairman Nemec, so I'm going to have to decline to wear it. I'm Phil Nemec. I'm the acting chairman tonight. Let me do the roll call. Anthony Jacoby.
President.
Mark Cunningham.
President.
And Louis Campagna is not here today, hence the three out of five. All right, I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 26th, 2022 Planning Board Meeting, subject to the relatively minor revisions that are circulated to the fellow members of the board and to Margaret earlier in the week.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right. We have four items on what I hope, expect to be a pretty quick meeting today. Those four items are 22-28, application 22-28, which is Southeast Asia Cuisine. The second will be application 22-09 Coffee Labs Roasters, which is at 493 New Rochelle Road. The third item will be application 22-13 61 Morgan Street. And finally, we'll have application 22-23, which is 68 Rose Avenue. If you're here for anything else, speak to Margaret. You're in the wrong place. So without any further ado, let's get started with application 22-28, which is Southeast Asia Cuisine.
Do you guys want to look at this just in case?
Thank you.
As the owner of 75 Garth Road, I am making the application. Is this, should I move this?
It works, but if you can also give us your name. Perfect.
I'm Mary Ann D. Pope. Address, 1 Laurel Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York. I am the property owner at 75 Garth Road, and I have prepared the application for Southeast Asia Cuisine that I am submitting. English is my tenants' second language, and they're good tenants for me, but there's just no way that they could navigate this process of applying for a special permit. Therefore, I am doing it. It's my hope that it will help them to increase their business after the pandemic and that it will help them be competitive with the other businesses that already have outdoor dining.
Yep. So this is an application, as I understand it, for a site plan and special permit approval for outdoor dining.
For outdoor dining, yes.
And that outdoor dining, as I understand it, is outdoor dining that has been permitted during the last two years during the pandemic.
Yes, I may.
But this year, and believe it or not, this isn't the first application. We've been getting at least one a month where restaurants are seeking to, I guess, to make more permanent the arrangement that we had the past two years because people seem to like outdoor dining, and as you said, it helps the bottom line.
Sometimes the customers are reluctant to dine inside, so having this second option would be helpful for them. The application is a request to put eight tables, 16 chairs, two umbrellas, and five planters, which would be optional. All of the, anything that's out on the sidewalk would be within my property line. There are no changes, no alterations, no construction that's needed. The tables would be in front of Southeast Asia and would extend in front of Ruffled Feathers, and I'm sure you have the pictures so that you could see that. My architect, Len Brandis, has indicated that I meet all of the setbacks and the requirements. The plan hopefully will not disturb the harmony of the neighborhood or any of the development of adjacent properties, nor will it hinder any pedestrian traffic or vehicular traffic on Garth Road. The proposed outdoor dining for the existing establishment will comply with the standard requirements applicable to all special permits, Section 12-D. The plan complies with Standards 1, 2, and 3, in addition to the site plan standards of Section 11. The existing establishment will comply with the standards and requirements for outdoor dining, Section 12-H12 in Items A through L. I do have one correction, and it's something that I did not foresee when I made the application. And that refers to Item J, the positioning of, it reads, "All site furniture shall be stored inside after operating hours and shall be permanently affixed to the ground." I did not realize when I went about preparing this application that the bases of these umbrellas are so heavy to move that it would, and plus the height of the umbrella once it's closed, to move it each day, twice a day, in or out if they're putting the tables out. Inside, at Southeast Asia, there is a single door that goes in, and then once you're in that single little vestibule, there are two other doors. So maneuvering that umbrella past the two doorways would be difficult. I do have space, and during the temporary dining, they house the umbrellas on the side of the building, which is here, right in the corner.
It's like a little alleyway.
And I own the driveway of the apartments as well. So that, it's easier to roll them than to try to manipulate getting this.
So instead of putting them indoors, they're rolled to the side?
They're just rolled to the side against the building.
And one thing I'm interested in knowing, since this is not a novel experiment in outdoor dining, it's actually a formalization of an arrangement that's existed for the last two years. Have you used the same configuration in the past two years that you're proposing to use now?
Mary Ann, can you go back to the microphone?
Yes.
Because we have a stenographer that takes the minutes.
I'm sorry, you've gotten some high texts.
I know. I'm sorry, would you repeat the question?
Lot of corrections this week.
No, I just wanted to confirm that the configuration that you described to us, I think it was eight tables, 16 chairs, two umbrellas, and a series of planters, all within your property line.
Mm-hmm.
That that is the same tried and true configuration that's been used the past two years?
It is, it is the same.
All right. And I have a further question on that point, which I'll ask you to answer and then Margaret to corroborate. And that is, have you had any issues at all with the public, with any tripping hazards or anything in the two years that you've had this arrangement?
No, I did not. I am very, I'm a strict disciplinarian, and my tenants toe the line. And when I say it has to be here, these people do it. They may not speak English very well, but they are very good tenants. And I, no, fortunately, knock wood, in all the years that I've owned the property, and it's been many, I don't want to jinx myself.
And Margaret, is that, yeah?
Yes, never heard any complaints at all. And also, the, a building inspector and a fire inspector go look at the tables once they're laid out, just to ensure that they're not blocking pedestrian access or egress areas and things. And I think typically, they never run into problems, but they, you know, occasionally they'll make someone relocate a table slightly or.
Good. And can you tell me, what are the, what are the hours of operation for the restaurant?
They open at 11:00 and they close at 10:00.
Okay, and is that?
They do not.
Is that Monday, is that seven days a week, or is it?
Right now, they close on Monday, but that could change.
Okay. But every day that they're open, they keep the same hours, 11:00 to 10:00?
Yes.
11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.?
Yes. That's my understanding.
Okay. And the plan is to have the outdoor seating throughout that time period?
Yes.
Is that correct?
On the days that they can put it out. They may not put it out every single day, weather permitting or depending on staff, because they need additional staff to take care of the people outside.
Okay. Tell me where the, you've told me where the umbrella would be stored.
Mm-hmm.
The umbrellas would be stored.
It's just two.
Yes, but that's still umbrellas plural. Agree with me on that, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. What about the chairs and the?
The tables and chairs would go back inside.
Okay. No, you said that they might not be put out every day. If it was pouring rain, you wouldn't think that there'd be too many people interested in dining outside.
Right.
What would, are the tables and chairs in an area where they're away from the regular dining, or is it?
No, they're, they have, I don't know how many, but they've moved them, what they did the last time was move them to the back of their restaurant area. And I'm, some of them, I'm sure they use if they're not, you know, if they're not in use. And on the days that they don't put out the full eight tables, they would put out the required minimum number.
Okay.
Which is three tables and 12 chairs.
So it's not causing a problem in the interior of the restaurant?
No, no, it would, it would not.
All right. All right. Well, as I indicated, this is not the first of these applications we've had, and I'm generally quite sympathetic to restaurant owners, and quite frankly, have enjoyed outdoor dining, always enjoyed outdoor dining, but it was something of a lifeblood to eating, eating out during the pandemic, especially in 2020.
I think it does help for people who still don't want to eat inside. But again, you know, it's difficult for restaurateurs to staff another area, you know, because when you're outside, you can't be inside taking, taking orders, or you can't, you know. So I understand the difficulty they're faced all around. I just want to help my tenants make a living.
Sure.
So that my space stays occupied.
Good. Well, you've presented very capably on your tenants' behalf. I don't know if either my colleagues-
Yeah, no further questions.
Yep.
No, I don't, no. I think you covered everything.
All right. And Margaret, is the issue of the umbrellas staying on the side?
No, I think that's fine, as long as it's safe and as long as the fire. I defer to the building inspector and the fire, I think, for good.
Good. So we have a public hearing.
And that's, and that's why I've been putting them all along anyway, right? So no incidents, so it's all good.
So let me make a motion to open the public hearing on application 22-28 Southeast Asia Cuisine.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone? Not seeing anyone. I make a motion to close the public hearing on application 22-28 Southeast Asia Cuisine.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And I make a motion to approve the application for site plan and special permit approval for outdoor dining under application 22-28 Southeast Asia Cuisine.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, you're good to go.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Good luck.
Great welcome.
Thanks. Thank you, good luck.
All right. And you can see the acting chairman is, moves this thing along.
Yeah, I thought you were about four minutes old.
All right. Well, you're slowing me down. Application 22-09 Coffee Labs Roasters. Now you can talk. Sash would look pretty good, wouldn't it?
You should put it on.
Yeah, that's nice. It's a nice look.
Carol is watching.
You could take it and hang your Christmas cards on it in the holiday season.
You can get the snap from the TV, all right?
My name is Matthew Cornone. I'm the architect for Coffee Labs Roasters. The owner of the store, Mike Love, is here joining us tonight. Similar to the previous presentation, we are here for site plan approval. We do have an exterior seating component to our project as well. We are proposing, due to the size of the space that we have, we have a limited amount of seats on the inside. So if you all are familiar with this property, currently, it used to be a Chase Bank with a drive-through window in it. So what we want to do is we want to take that component where the drive-through window was, close off the driveway, and turn that into exterior seating. We want to take advantage of where that existing drive-through window was, and we want to put a pass-through window so we can serve the pedestrians who are sitting in the coffee area, coffee and pastries and whatever we're going to be serving to them. It's going to be a combination of some bar stools. Most of the seating will be this wicker rattan-style seating that we have here in these images. And here are a few renderings of what we're proposing the space to look like. We're going to have a trellis on top, kind of giving a little bit more protection from sun exposure. We'll have some seating areas, some fun seating. Basically, just a couple of outdoor sofas, a couple of outdoor café chairs, and the takeout window. That's really what we're looking to do here.
Okay, good.
It's a seasonal opportunity as well. So in the winter months, when it's too cold, it won't be used. The seating will be stored off-site during those winter months.
Now, tell me again what the, what the exact seating configuration and the number of seats and tables and whatever.
Yeah, so we have three café tables that seats two people each. So that's, that's six seating at the café table. We have a four-person seating arrangement against the side of the wall. And then we have two sofas with a couple of accent chairs. So we're looking at a total of about 14 seats outside.
And then, Matthew, this board actually is officially approves the architecture as well, so could you go over with them?
Oh, great.
What the proposed facade improvements are?
Sure. So previously, we presented to the, to the Architectural Review Board. And, one second.
Yeah, there's an extra clip on the table behind you if you need it as well.
I think I got it.
Okay.
Previously, we presented the Architectural Review Board. Again, this is the existing conditions of the space. It is currently under construction because we're working on the interior fit-out right now. But our proposed design would be to change the current front window into an operating overhead door storefront system, leaving the existing door in place. Over here, there was a side door that was once bricked up, so we're going to open that up and put a new door there as well, just to kind of help the circulation within the space. That door will be matching the front door. So here's an example of the garage-style door that we're using. It's an overhead. It'll match the same Anadon's bronze finish as the front door. Here are elevations. So again, we have the garage door, the existing door, the side door next to the existing window, and then this trellis that we're going to be putting in that's going to infill the, where the carport once were. We are planning on putting two bollards at the end of that to prevent any opportunity of an idiot driving their car through there, lack of a better word. And then here is the, that takeout window, which would be a slider-style window.
Okay.
Yeah. And, yeah, so that's basically the presentation. Oh, one more thing, too. We are adding plantings in the front of the building as well. So the landscape will be permeable. It'll be native, native plants with some stone and crushed, crushed stone walkways.
Red bud there?
It is a red bud, yeah. We have a couple of accent trees that are going to be the red buds.
I thought when you presented to the ARB, you had said you were no longer proposing the crushed stone.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. Yep. So the existing asphalt that we have here, we're just going to be coating it a light-colored coating so that it'd have a better albedo, but we're not going to be tearing up the asphalt.
Okay.
And then the walkway is going to be a bluestone?
It'll be a granite, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I know you've, you've gone through this in some detail with the ARB, and I think a lot of the, certainly, it's, as I understand, a very welcome addition to the area and the neighborhood. So I think the ARB's done a lot of the hard work of, you know, with you in getting this to a point where aesthetically, we're hitting on all cylinders. So, you know, I don't have too many, too many questions for you. I think, I think, have you, everything that the ARB has said to do, is that done?
Yeah, yeah, and I think the issue previously was not so much with the aesthetics or the design, it was just presenting the catalog cut sheets and providing additional information.
We could really see finishes.
Yeah. So, but, but the one thing I did want to ask you, the one thing that the ARB did not see was the outdoor, the outdoor dining, the layout for that.
Yes.
And I have a question for you in terms of what is going to happen to that furniture at night. I know there's a trellis over it, but I do think that there might be concern about people hanging out in there. It's a furniture, and technically, it's supposed to be brought in. Is there an opportunity to bring that furniture in at night?
That's a, that's a great question. Our idea is to cordon off the area in the after-hours, so it's not accessible for anyone.
In a way that's secure, so people, okay.
Yeah, in a secured, in a gate-like system, so people can't get in there.
Okay, that, I think that's important, and I think to residents, that would be important.
That's right.
Okay, great.
Because the nicer you make it look, the more inviting it is.
Yes.
That's true. Rats go to, rats go to Central Park, too, right?
Which is fine, as long as it's not 2:00 in the morning.
Yes, that's right.
So, but you're right, the ARB did look at it, you know, in great, great detail.
Yeah. And what are, what are the hours of operation for this establishment?
It's going to be, the café will be open between 6:30, 7:00 a.m. in the morning, and usually close around 5:30 to 6:00, depending on, you know, the time of year and what's going on.
Okay. And in terms of the outdoor seating, is that, I know we don't make a distinction anymore. You get a permit, right? And it's a year, it's not just a seasonal permit?
That's correct. So for the outdoor dining, what the zoning law says with regard to the special permit for the outdoor dining is that the police chief or the building inspector have, if there are reports of problems, we have the authority to bring it back before the planning board, but otherwise, a special permit does not need to be renewed. And we actually have never had somebody have to come back before the board, so that's what I do.
But do you envision probably not using it in February so much?
No, I think in the, in the cold dead of winter, we were anticipating actually removing the furniture and storing it off-site.
Okay. So that's, that makes a lot of sense. All right. Margaret, was there, was there an issue as well with a form?
No, well, I had mentioned to the applicant that, and I think they have reviewed them and understand the requirements of the special permit. So the applicant was afforded the Section 12D, which, you know, all special permits have to comply with, and also Section 12-H12 of the zoning law, which is specific to outdoor dining. And that, so I think without specifically writing those out, he has addressed most of those. For example, hours of operations, securing the furniture. So I think he's good with that.
Okay. Will there be a need to formalize that in the?
You know what? We'll, we'll make those the conditions of approval to make sure that you understand and comply with the special permit requirements. And again, I think you've read them, but they, you know, there can't be any outdoor music, that kind of thing.
Okay.
That's correct, yeah. Yeah, this venue is just for drinking coffee and eating croissant, so.
Okay.
All right. Well, before we go to the public hearing, any further questions from the board?
Yeah, what type of gates would be used to block it off at night, like wrought iron or?
Well, no, we would probably be using a wooden-type structure because it would match the trellis and the applique that we're putting on the structure.
Okay.
Yeah, I think an aesthetically pleasing gate even would be a good idea. Yeah, yeah.
Something with spikes on it, right?
Yeah, I know.
And that will have like a lock on it, obviously.
That's correct, yeah. It'll be fully locked, and like I said, it'll be cordoned off from the public during the after-hours.
And in the area where the bike rack is, on that patio there, is that an elevation change just past that little planting area?
Over here?
I think, yeah.
Yeah, there is. We do have an existing.
If you flip to the drawing before?
Sure.
101, A101?
Yeah. So what, what's, what you see here is we have the sidewalk proper, which is at the lower grade, and the sidewalk does ramp up to get to the carport area. And right here, we have the ramp. And the ramp is going to, well, it's still there now. We do have to replace the guardrail because of an accident that occurred a few months back. But, but basically, this configuration's going to stay the same. We're just changing the plantings and the traffic surface.
You know, my concern was is just, is the elevation change, is it, is it just a step or is it more than that?
No, it's just one step. Yeah, yeah, it's about six inches.
So it's not a tripping hazard or?
Yeah, no, no, it's just, it's just six inches.
It was hard to tell from, it was like you said, on 101, it's, it's a planter in front of it, I just couldn't see if it was a-
Right, right. Yeah, no, it's a, it's a six-inch rise, so it's really just one step.
All right. Well, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for application 22-09 Coffee Labs Roasters.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Members of the public, here's your shot. Nothing. All right. I make a motion to close the public hearing for application 22-09 Coffee Labs Roasters.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Well, I think we've addressed, between the ARB and the questions we've asked you today, I'm certainly satisfied that we've gotten this application in the very best form we can. So I make a motion to approve this application, subject to completing whatever additional paperwork.
Sure. I think really it'll just be in the resolution, making it clear that the applicant has demonstrated and must comply with the conditions of the special permit, which is kind of a given if you're granting the special permit.
That's right.
And then I do think we will have to note about the gate, because I don't believe that's shown on the plans, but I think that's a great idea.
Sure.
Correct. And the landscape plan, to the extent there is one, is that, I don't think that's, this is not a new construction, so does it require?
That's correct. And also, I think, so typically, for a new construction, we require that a licensed landscape architect sign off on the landscape plan after it's been installed, to ensure it's been installed in accordance with the plan. In this case, they're working with nature's cradle, and I like the concept of the native plants and things, and as long as, as long as it's consistent. I think that's fine.
I think that's fine. So, so subject to the requirements that you just delineated, I make a motion to approve application 22-09 Coffee Labs Roasters.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck, looks good.
Thanks, everybody. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're on to our third application, which is application 22-13 61 Morgan Street.
My name is Luciano. J K D R T.
Luciano is the microphone.
Yeah, take the mic and give me your whole name, Luciano. Luciano's a wonderful name, but.
I'm going to put you on the spot here.
Lombard, I'm Scottish. Can I go there? I'll show you.
Yes, absolutely. Take it with you.
And I'm short.
You can do a little Sinatra if you like, you know?
I'm sure.
Or Tony Orlando.
Can you hear me?
That was.
Should I start?
Yeah, Sinatra, classic, so I'll give you that.
This is the existing house right now, as it is, and we are proposing, and this obviously is the house that go from south towards- And we are proposing, and this obviously, it's the house that go from south towards the north. We're proposing to do this. Last time at the ARB, they kind of set the design with some tune-up to be done, such as they asked us to introduce some trims to add this window. It's bubbled, of course, and to enlarge this other window and lower the railing. I had originally a 42 inches. So they said 36 is what it imposed. It was more of safety on my part, but we lowered that one. Also, they asked us to bring some specs, such as the light that we have. You got to go on AE to see the light on the outside. If I can approach, I'll give it to you. They asked us to bring some bricks over. So they want to know, let's say, the type of doors, windows, entry doors, and siding. And I have with me. This is the trims, the deck that goes around the window. This is the siding. And behind it's the light. You can have two. And the glass. This is the door, the deck doors, deck. And this would be the window, 500 square meters. And again, 500 square meters from scanner, it's on the T1. And this is the front door.
Microphone, Luciano. The microphone. Thank you.
Okay. That's why they asked us to bring over here. And present to you what are we trying to achieve over here. Let's make it, you know, now on paper, make it real, if it's possible.
Luciano, as I understand it, the, you're not expanding the building footprint or the floor area of the building?
No, no.
So this is all, these are all really facade improvements, right?
Pretty much, yes.
Yeah, pretty much. And I know that there's a whole series of conditions that the Architectural Review Board suggested.
Yes, and we've done it.
And it looks like, from the notes that Margaret's given me, that you've addressed each one of those. And so is that all reflected in this?
In this elevation. Whatever it's bubbled, there's a number. It's number three at this point. It's number three. So it's all bubbled up, and it's down on the last 0320, I forgot my glasses. 2522. It's all three.
Terrific. Yeah.
Yeah, and I did go through my notes and confirm that.
She helped me.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, this is, I think it looks good. Yeah. And certainly, it's, and it has a functionality to it, and I know there are, there's at least one other home in the area that has the second floor. Yeah, so it's not completely out of keeping with the neighborhood. So I think I'm satisfied that these are really nice changes, and it's going to enhance the appearance of the property. Any questions from?
Yeah.
No, I don't.
Yeah, how big is the porch up there? You can put chairs up there? How big is the porch on the top? You can put like a chair up there or?
No, I think might, might, I don't know. Does he wants to go out?
7 feet. 7 feet.
It's about, yeah.
Put a chair. Yep.
Yeah, it's big enough there.
I thought you said if he's going to put a chair, the owner, I don't know.
But Luciano, it is being proposed so that the residents can use it as a deck or a porch.
Yes, yes. It's proposed to him to use.
Sufficiently sized in order to put a couple of chairs or a little table out there.
Yeah, because it's actually overhanging the lower deck some.
Yeah.
So slightly bigger than in scale here anyway.
And I think that's the reason for it, yeah.
Okay. Makes a lot of sense. So I make a motion to open the public hearing on application 22-13 61 Morgan Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone? Anyone? No one. I make a motion to close the public hearing on application 22-13 61 Morgan Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any last questions? Because I'm okay with the application as is.
Very nice.
Good. I make a motion to approve application 22-13 61 Morgan Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. You're good.
Good night.
Good luck.
All right. Finally, we have application 22-23 68 Rose Avenue. This would look like the esteemed John Yanacito.
Good luck.
Thank you. You always seem to be the cleanup hitter, like our last meeting, like of, you know, this is our last, last regular meeting.
The crowd.
It's just like the audience got even bigger now. Usually, you're back there for an hour and a half though.
Yeah, we're all the people with the pitchforks when you need them, huh?
Okay, good evening. My name is John Yanacito. I'm an architect, and I'm representing Mr. and Mrs. Ryan, the owners of the subject property. We are proposing additions and alterations to the existing single-family home located at 68 Rose Avenue. I'm going to come up to the board so I can show you the scope of work. So the proposed scope of work will include a two-story addition and a wood deck at the rear of the existing residence.
Did we want to give these back or not?
No, I'll keep them for the record. They're good for us. Thank you.
So here's the two-story addition and the wood deck. We're also proposing the construction of a new front-entry portico, which is this small area here in the front. We're proposing front façade alterations, which will include a new gable roof along the whole front and a new bay window. And we're proposing interior alterations on both the first and second floor. And we're proposing site alterations, which will include the expansion of the existing driveway, construction of new retaining walls along the driveway, reconfiguration of the front walkway, and the construction of a new patio at the rear yard. Here we have the existing front elevation. So the existing gable over the front entrance door will remain, and then we're going to add a new gable along the front and replace this roof here with some metal roofing and construct a new portico. So we'll look at the proposed front. So here we have the proposed front. So this is the new gable that runs along the whole length of the front of the house, the existing gable, the new front-entry portico, new metal roof over the new bay window, which will replace the existing bay window, and the wider driveway with a new overhead door. And then at the rear, this is the two-story addition with the new deck, which will be partially covered. And this is the rear view, which will mimic the front with the double gable and a covered, partially covered, covered deck at the rear. And here is a rendering of the front facade, showing the finished materials. So on the wall surfaces, we're going to use hardy plank siding and hardy plank shakes in an Arctic white finish. The existing brick will be painted white. The new stone veneer on the front portico steps and the walls, the retaining walls, will be a gray granite. The roof will be asphalt over the main portion of the house, and the roof over the bay window and the portico will be a standing seam metal roof in a black finish. The windows will be vinyl clad in a white finish. The trims and columns will be AZAC in a white finish. The shutters will be composite in a black finish. The railing at the rear deck will be a composite in a white finish, and the railing at the front porch, the front portico, and the driveway steps will be a black metal. And the overhead door will be fiberglass in a white finish. The application was presented to the Architectural Review Board on June 2nd, and it was approved as submitted with no additional comments. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay.
Very nice.
Yeah.
The standing seam black really makes it pop, shutters, front entrance way, very nice job.
Thank you.
It is a good-sized enlargement of the house. It's a 50% enlargement, and all of that really is in the back, right?
Yeah, because it's a very deep lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they still maintain a pretty good-sized yard, even with the addition.
Show me how the back deck is partly sheltered.
So here is, so right here, this portion of the deck here. And so this little roof here, plus a portion of the second floor, will create a covered, partially covered deck.
Got it. So it'll be partially covered the entire length of the deck?
Just this whole area here.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, the same width would be covered as open. Whatever protrudes beyond the roof line would be an open deck.
Got it.
And then we're doing a small stone patio here at the bottom, so it would be at grade level.
And the configuration is, you know, the back is, I guess, facing south, right?
Oh, it could be.
Back is facing?
Yes.
Facing south.
Facing south?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so that makes some sense.
Yeah, they still have about, from the back of the addition, it's 66 feet to the rear property line, even with the addition.
Yeah. And so they'll probably get a lot of sunlight as well in the backyard.
The future pool, which everyone seems to be building.
Well, wait a second. I know Rose is in that, what's the?
Crawford Street drainage.
Crawford, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, that's a little, it's on the other one.
Yeah, I know. You're a little further away from there, but we've heard enough about that in the past, so. But that's a different application for a different day, if ever. It looks beautiful.
Thank you.
So I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing on application 22-23 68 Rose Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're the people with the pitchforks when you need them. Looks like no one's going to comment on this wonderful application. So I will therefore, with a heavy heart, have to make a motion to close the public hearing for application 22-23 68 Rose Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any further?
Yes, I just want to, on the record, say we will have a special planning board meeting on Tuesday, July 19th, here in the courtroom at 7:00, just to wrap up old business, and it's one old business item, which is the Westchester Meat Market. And we'll notice that in the town clerk's office, and I will remind you guys, but it's not listed on our current schedule, and thank you for agreeing to do that.
Okay. Well, it's a good thing we did that before voting, because I know we lose our size of the audience.
It won't affect your vote, it won't.
I know the owner who's building the restaurant.
Even though we have to come to work in July.
The owner who's building the new restaurant, he's a very nice person, and hopefully, he gets it approved. It'll be great.
All right. Well, I make a motion to, speaking of approvals, I make a motion to approve application 22-23 68 Rose Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, I thought you already did that part, so yeah, I made no sense. Yeah, sorry.
It looks really nice.
Don't worry, Margaret. We were all understanding, and we allowed that senior moment to you. All right. So I don't think we have anything else until next month, so I make a motion to close the Town of Eastchester Planning Board meeting of Thursday, June 23rd, 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.